First, I'd like to welcome everyone. This is the meeting, in fact, this is really kind of our first meeting of the Committee on Economic and Community Development. And I'm just gonna, first of all, go down the list of attendees in alphabetical order. So, members of the committee, I'm Sharon Green Middleton, Chair of the Committee, Vice President of the Council, and Representative of the 6th District. We have John Bullock, Member of the Committee, 9th District. Are you here, John?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Mark Conway, Member of the Committee, representing the 4th District. Councilman Conway?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Ryan, Councilman Dorsey, representing the 3rd District, Member of the Committee. Are you here, Councilman Dorsey? Hearing no response. Also, Member of the Committee, Councilman Glover, representing the 13th District. Are you here, Councilman Glover?
Yes, present, thank you.
Thank you. We also have Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District, and Member of the Committee, Councilman Ramos.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. And we also have a Member of the Committee, Councilman Stokes, representing the 12th District. Councilman Stokes?
Present.
Okay, and looking, I don't see any other Council Members at this point to recognize. So, Members of the Office of the President. I see Matt Stegman. Matt? You wanna say hi?
Yeah, sorry, thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have a Member of the President's Office, Nikki Thompson. Nikki, you wanna say hi? Nikki might be having a little difficulty, but I see her name present. We also have Aaron DeGraffery, General Counsel. You wanna say hi?
Present, good afternoon. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Representing the Mayor's Office, I'm looking on the list. We have Nia, Nina, from the Mayor's Office. You wanna say hi?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the Mayor's Office at this time? Okay. And I also wanna recognize, we do have, I think I saw, oh, Councilman Eric Costello joining us. Thank you, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, today is a legislative oversight matter, and it's a briefing on economic and community development, and it's basically for our committee and for the roles and responsibility for zoning, with the purpose of representatives from the Baltimore City Department of Planning and Law Department Committee on the roles and responsibility of parties during, excuse me, review and authorization of zoning legislation in Baltimore City. I would like to discuss, to specifically center on legislative matters that come before the committee, such as rezonings, planned unit developments, conditional uses, zoning code amendments, and comprehensive rezoning. Those are things like we had implemented in transform. We do have these agencies here that are the agency representatives. With the Planning Commission, we have, I'm trying, I see Alaino DePietro, or I mean, for the planning, I see Eric Tiso.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Chairman, Chair.
Has Lori Feinberg joined us yet?
Yes, I'm here, Mrs., Madam Chair, and thank you.
Thank you, Lori. And for the Law Department, we have Elena DePietro.
Elena?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And is there anyone else from your department?
I believe Hillary Rulli and Victor Turvila, and possibly Ashley Graff, will be joining us as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see Hillary. Thank you, Hillary, for joining.
Vice President, can you hear me now?
And I also see Victor. Who's that just spoke?
This is Nikki. Can you hear me now?
Oh, now I can hear you.
Okay, my apologies, technical difficulties earlier.
I understand. Thank you, Nikki, for joining. And the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals, do we have a representative from that office? I don't see.
No, I don't see them here today.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're in their hearing right now.
All right, thank you. So, at this point, Lori and Eric, I'd like you to go ahead and start.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. We just put together this outline to try to keep us on track. Eric and I will talk first a little bit about the planning side of things, and then let Elena's team talk about the requirements for zoning, and then wrap up with a couple bills that are either current or in the works. This diagram gives you a sense of, you know, the whole realm of development, and of course, on the far right there are the legislative authorizations that are, would come to this committee as zoning changes, and roughly gives you a sense of where they fit in the development review and, you know, kind of construction process. And I'll let Eric speak a little bit to now on this slide.
Thank you. So, I'm the Chief of Land Use and Urban Design and Planning, and we're the division that provides development oversight, among other things, and also support the Planning Commission within the department. So, when we work with applicants, and this could be, you know, regular homeowners that are looking to do something, it could be a more traditional developer, or it could be with one of you that are looking to do something that has land use or zoning implication, we offer a pre-development meeting where we try and pull together the various folks within our office and potentially other agencies as well that might get impacted by the proposal. Just have you tell us in plain language, you know, what is it that you're looking to do, and then we can make introductions, you know, to the various folks that might be involved. So, typically, we'd have the comprehensive planner, who is the community liaison for an area, they can interpret our urban renewal plans, they can provide the connection to any formal community organizations that may be active in the area. If there's a historic interest, our historic preservation planners may get brought in. Many projects have environmental factors to them, whether it's the floodplain, the critical area, forest conservation, landscape management, things of those nature, so we'll pull those folks in from our sustainability division, and then depending on what the project needs might be, sometimes we can get folks from other agencies into the meeting, but if not, we'll definitely make those connections, and then make recommendations on the best way to navigate the review process. So, do this first, do that next, do these two things at the same time, and then provide an estimate of timeline on how to get through things. So, we recognize one of our competitive advantages compared to surrounding jurisdictions is the speed, efficiency, and consistency of our development review.
And the zoning code, I'm not gonna read this, but this just gives you a sense of the general organization of the zoning code, and in the back are the tables which have the permitted uses. So, we'll talk in a minute about a text change versus a map change, but we talked about the text, this is it. Legislative authorizations, this is where your committee and the council comes into a role. These are, as outlined in the code, the areas that you have legislative authorization. So, these are the things that need legislative changes per our zoning code. Major variance, conditional use, text amendment, map amendments, they're the most common, master plans, either educational, hospital, special signage, or the planned unit development. And Elena, do you wanna start here about the authority?
Certainly, I think Victor's gonna start us off with that aspect of the legislation.
Great. Good afternoon, this is Vic Turvila, and I'm gonna talk in the very broadest way about what state law requires us to do. And initially, I wanted to point out that half the counties in Maryland aren't able to craft their own zoning laws. They have to follow whatever state process is, but Baltimore City as a charter county is able to craft its own zoning laws, and that's quite a nice thing to, for us to do locally, but it's worthwhile bearing in mind, I think, that if the state ever becomes disillusioned with how we do zoning, and by the state, I mean our, really, our local delegation to Annapolis, if they ever became disillusioned about how we go about zoning and planning, they can take those powers away, and they can actually put us under the state system, which would be a terrible thing. So, it's worthwhile keeping in mind that we ought to be very careful about how we exercise our zoning powers. In any event, it's worthwhile to begin, we do have, the city has given, is given legislative power to zone property to promote health, safety, and general welfare, and that includes, among other things, the ability to promote and enhance historic preservation. So, the very beginning of this thing, the state law, the city, the power to establish zoning districts that will regulate construction, alteration, repair of buildings, structures in land within those districts. And once those districts have been established by a process we call comprehensive rezoning, once those districts are established, then anytime we go to rezone a property within a district that is allowing the properties to be regulated under a different zoning designation, it's known as a map amendment. State law says that if we have a map amendment, the only way you can approve a proposed map amendment is if there has been one, either a change in the character of the neighborhood, not just a small change, but a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, or there was a mistake in the original zoning classification. So, if you don't have either one of them, you can't rezone a property, and half the battle is trying to find one or the other if you wanna rezone. Under state law, if you have a map amendment, the state says we have to have a public hearing. Our local code also says you have to have a public hearing, but basically, we're really reading from the state law, saying you have to have a public hearing. Equally important is the fact that if you have a map amendment, you have to, that is, a city council has to refer the bill to the Planning Commission and the BMZA for a report. The state law goes further, not only do you have to refer it, but you actually have to have a report back from these two agencies, from the Planning Commission and the BMZA, before you can actually adopt a bill. So, that is extremely important to keep in mind as we go speeding through some of these rezonings, you have to receive a report. You don't have to receive a recommendation, but you have to receive a report from the BMZA and the Planning Commission when we have a map amendment. Now, let's see. Now, and if the BMZA and the Planning Commission disapprove of a proposed rezoning, state law says the only way the city council can approve that map amendment is if the city council votes by a majority, that is, eight votes have to approve the bill, eight out of the 15. Now, besides a map amendment, you'll also have a text amendment. Unlike a map amendment, which requires certain findings of fact, which we'll go into in a moment, a text amendment does not require any findings of fact. Essentially, it is a totally legislative procedure. You just have to use your best judgment. When a text amendment is proposed, that is, an amendment to the zoning text, use your best judgment to see if that proposed changed in text actually accomplishes or promotes health, safety, or the general welfare. So, with that, I think Hillary's gonna fill in a lot of those details.
I'm happy to go now, or if Lori wants to turn back to her proposal, whatever suits you, Lori.
No, we're all set. I think we wanted to go, cover the map amendments, and then this is really the required finding, so I don't know if you want, were you gonna cover that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of what you need to find, feel free to cover it. I was gonna cover more the nuts and bolts of the findings of fact process, so I don't know, maybe it makes sense for you to go first.
Oh, I think we covered most of this, let's see. Well, again, we talked, Victor covered the procedure and the hearings, just to note, the Planning Commission meets every three weeks, and we do require posting, it's approximately every three weeks, and we've worked with you on that. And this is just a little bit about the text, examples of text amendments, and sort of the public outreach. Text amendments tend to be citywide, have citywide impact, and so therefore, we like to hold a citywide informational meeting prior to our Planning Commission hearing to make sure people know about it, and there's fewer surprises and opportunity for input in that. That's the one difference with a text amendment.
And just to add, and I thank Councilman Costello for joining in, as he is our council representative at all the Planning Commission meetings, so any questions that you have as far as speaking to the council members of the committee, you can, Councilman Costello is also a resource for us.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I thank you for that, and I just wanted to chime in. So, the Planning Commission usually meets every three weeks on Thursday afternoons. If there's anything on the agenda that's in your district or something that's citywide that's of concern, please reach out to me. You can always reach out to Lori and Eric Tiso, who are incredibly responsive, but if you have a question, you know, you can always feel free to reach out to me, and I'll help try and track down an answer for you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And if for some reason you're not getting our agendas for the Planning Commission, please let Eric know. We had some, you know, sometimes there's some email list issues, or if there's staffers that need to get our agendas, please let Eric know.
And when she says Eric, she means Tiso, not Eric Costello.
I'm sorry, Eric Tiso, sorry, yes. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Hillary. This is, I guess this is the last piece that we had, the findings, these are requirements of the zoning code that we put forth, that the council must find, and then the standards, additional standards to consider. One of the things to note is there are occasions, and this may be a good lead into what Hillary's saying, where you may get a report, a negative report, from the Planning Commission on a, let's say, a map amendment. So, we do not report positively, therefore, we would not have findings of fact in favor of that bill. There have been some challenges with that, and it would then be, so if we did find favorably, we would present at least some thought on findings of fact, but if we didn't, you wouldn't have that, and that would be in the committee's purview. So, Hillary, do you wanna go from here?
Sure, that's a great segue in, and I have to, at this point, give credit to Aaron DeGraffenwright, who's now, you know, in the job as a lawyer for the city council. A lot of what I'm about to say, I pulled from his most recent memo on this topic, so you can feel free to chime in, as I'm sure you know, he did tons of land use litigation when he was in the city's law department. But the nuts and bolts of this is kind of important because courts will treat the city council, who sits in review of map amendments, like, not like Victor said, the legislative stuff that, you know, applies everywhere. For example, if you wanted to change, you know, the requirements for a typical, a particular type of sign, citywide, that wouldn't be, you know, that wouldn't be specific to a particular piece of property, that would be, you know, the zoning code as a whole. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about property-specific. So, when you hold a public hearing to decide what to do with a particular piece of property, it's property-specific, then the courts treat you as judges, and they see the process in front of the city council, just like your first attempt at the trial court. You are the fact-finders, so it's essentially, you might hear the term quasi-judicial, that's essentially what you're doing. You're no longer legislators thinking about policy, you're judges weighing facts and the evidence. And so, I'm just gonna touch on four basic things to keep in mind, these are sort of best practices. Since you're sitting like a judicial tribunal, you have to allow cross-examination, and so when the public gets up to testify, if some other member of the public wants to cross-examine that person, or cross-examine a member of the Planning Department or whatever, they have the legal right to do that, and that usually can, has to occur right after the testimony that was given. So, if some community member stands up and says, you know, I disagree with something, you know, if another member wants to get up and challenge that, that's permitted. But you can have uniform time limits, so it doesn't go out of control, you can say everyone gets five minutes, and you can limit it to what the person said that is seeking the cross-examination. So, you know, if someone gets up and says the problem with this is X, Y, Z, then the cross-examination can be limited to those topics, X, Y, and Z. It can't go off on another area. But the cross-examination here is important because it's usually, it shouldn't cut into the person's general time. So, what do I mean by that? If you give the members of the public five minutes each to speak, that has to be in addition to any cross-examination time that they would want to cross-examine anyone else who has already presented, and this is more of something that the chair of the committee has to sort of police, but in general, in the past, it's been, you know, five minutes for the public, and it's up to the public, or the, you know, and when I say public, it could be a lawyer for somebody who doesn't want a development, they get, you know, it's up to them to ask for cross-examination, but you should realize that's allowed. And then, and the next point is documents. You have to accept any documents you're given during the hearing, and usually, again, that's council staff that does that, but after the hearing's over, it's like a court proceeding, the court proceeding's over, you can't accept evidence after you have your court proceeding. And so, the basis of your decision, this is the third point, has to be from what you heard in the hearing. You know, it has to be about the testimony that was given there, either, you know, the planning staff that stands up, or the developer, or members of the community, that has to be the basis for your decision. You can attend community sessions, you can talk to members of the community outside of the committee, but your decision as a judge really has to be about what you're hearing during the committee hearing, and the reason for that is, it's gotta be something in the record, that if someone goes to Circuit Court and appeals, it's gotta be available in the record of this proceeding, which is recorded. So, you don't wanna be basing your decision on something that you didn't share at the hearing. So, it's fairly easy, you can, you know, say, look, I've talked to the community in the past, and here's what I'm hearing, this is what I'm thinking, this is what I heard from someone else, or so-and-so can't be here today. It's not a huge bar, you just remember to discuss it when you start discussing your decision. If you don't vote on the day of the committee hearing, that's when it can become problematic. If you think about it, you know, judges don't talk to the plaintiffs and the defendants after the hearing's over and before they make their decision. So, you'd think of yourself in the same way, you know, if you're gonna wait to vote on the bill, you don't wanna be having discussions and emails with developers after that time. And then finally, the fourth point is, again, you have to make findings of fact, and so, again, you're making a decision based on the testimony you heard, any of the documents you received, any cross-examination, anything that happens during the hearing, you're making that decision based on what you heard, and you have to compare what you heard as the facts with what Lori has, and Eric Tiso has in their materials here, what the zoning code requires. So, for map amendments, as Victor said, you can only rezone if there's been a substantial change in the neighborhood or a mistake in the prior rezoning. And so, the Law Department bill report will set out the, what the law is, and obviously, the zoning code sets it out as well, it's just, you know, here are the rules you have to go by, and then you compare those rules to the facts you heard at the hearing, and then that, that's the fact-finding process. So, at the end of the committee hearing, usually, the whole committee votes on the facts that they found, and then they vote on the bill up or down to go on through the regular bill process. So, that's about it.
And this is Aaron DeGraffenwright, I just wanna add one, or emphasize one thing that Hillary went through, and that's the importance that the decisions that get made are based on what was actually presented, you know, during the hearing, or, you know, documents that you may have received and was shared to everybody at some point in the deliberation, and that you identify that we are making our decision because of this reason at, you know, some point during the hearing or the decision-making process, because if you base it on something that occurs during the hearing, but it's not articulated, then that can put the decision in jeopardy. So, this is very thorough, and I appreciate everything that Hillary's put out here, but there's one part of it that I'd like to underline.
Hi, this is Elena. We wanted to conclude with just a little bit about, more about the change in mistake rule, and what findings are necessary to prove that there was a change in mistake, and allows the council then to approve the rezoning. So, if you're ready for that, I will move ahead. Sounds like you probably are, thanks. That was very important, what Aaron had to add there, I think, I'm glad that he chimed in for, and clarified that. So, land used articles, as Hillary mentioned, said that the, in order to grant an amendment to a zoning classification, and this again is with regard to a bill that speaks to a specific property, there has to be a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood where the property is located, or a mistake in the zoning classification, and this applies only to, like I said, that these single or individual properties lumped together-type bills, but it wouldn't apply to a comprehensive rezoning, which is a rezoning of a large parcel of land. So, when it's comprehensive, you don't need to apply the change in mistake standards. So, there's, a mistake is not something like, just like, oh, I messed up or something, it has to be shown that the mistake was not just bad judgment or questionable policy, there has to be, it can't just be, oh, I didn't think about the, what this was gonna do economically to, you know, the value of my property, or even if it's not compatible with its surrounding areas, it still may not be a mistake if at the time that the property was originally zoned, it was, you know, that, the surrounding area was taken into consideration. So, when you want to establish a mistake, you've got to show that at the time of the comprehensive rezoning, which we just did, and I guess it's 2015, I think that Lori can correct me on the date, you have to show that at that time, the legislature, which is your predecessors, failed to take into account existing facts, or something that was foreseeable at the time, they made They made these changes to the zoning of that area, and that the zoning was premised on those, on things that were either lacked completeness in some way. The events that occurred subsequent to comprehensive zoning are, whoops, sorry, messed up on that one. The events that occurred subsequent to the comprehensive zoning have proven that the legislature's initial premises were incorrect. So if something occurred post-comprehensive zoning that showed that they maybe made a mistake for some reason, about something that should have been considered, that can be a reason to find mistake. Clerical errors and things like that are another reason where something can be part of an original ordinance, but not considered an actual mistake. So once you've established the findings of fact, you apply them to these considerations to determine whether or not the finding support that there was an actual mistake made at the time of the last comprehensive rezoning. In the current environment, since our last comprehensive rezoning was so recently in the past, you have to really consider, has things really changed since that time? And that's the next part of it, is the substantial change in the character of the neighborhood to justify the rezoning. So for example, the change rule is a little bit more nebulous than the mistake rule. The mistake rule has some really concrete parameters to go by. But when you're talking about a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, you can't rely on changes that were considered at the time of the comprehensive zoning. In other words, the planning commission and the people that were making those determinations at that time knew of the circumstances of the character of the neighborhood surrounding this property, but for reasons that were appropriate, decided that this property should be zoned differently. Let's see, there's, although factors, sometimes courts, in some cases, have considered socioeconomic changes in the area, like completion of large infrastructure projects, like interstates and things like that, or some types of commercial development that came into the area that, you know, drastically changed the nature of the neighborhood, as things that would affect a change in the character of the neighborhood. But that is very specific to individual cases, and not, you can't apply that as a general rule. So that is basically what you're going to be looking for when you decide whether the facts support a change or mistake. And there are standards in the code itself, and I'm not going to go through all of them because there's a lot of them, that you would apply those facts to in order to make those types of, those decisions when you vote on the bill. So that's the end of our presentation.
Planning, was there anything else that you were going to get into?
No, except we did have two bills, well, one bill that's already been introduced, that we wanted to just discuss with the committee. Councilman Bullock introduced this, as well as, there were two other cosponsors, and to make sure the committee was comfortable with our schedule. And then we have some upcoming bills. But I don't know if you want to do questions on the general content first?
Yes, I do. So we'll start with the committee. If you, is there anyone on the committee? You can use your raise hand function. If you have any questions at this point, use the raise hand function, and we'll let you ask your question. So we'll start with Councilwoman Ramos. Has her hand raised? Councilwoman?
Yep. Hi, everybody. Thanks, Madam Chair. Really appreciate the time. Mr. Pietro, could you, I must have missed the change rule when we're trying to, that you just described. What was the first couple of things in there in terms of what the standards are for making a map change?
Well, what I was saying is, the general standard is a change in the character of neighborhood, or a mistake in the most...
I got the mistake part, but the...
The change in the character of neighborhood is a little more nebulous than the mistake rule. There's not as concrete type of parameters to follow. But in general, there are things that, that weren't considered at the time of the comprehensive rezoning.
Okay.
But you can't use things, maybe it's easier to define it in terms of what you can't do. You can't use things that were available, facts that were available at the time of the comprehensive rezoning to justify a rezoning after the fact, several years later, whatever. If they were contemplated by those who made those decisions at the comprehensive rezoning time, then generally, you know, there has to be something other than those types of things to justify a piece of zoning.
Okay, thanks. That was that part that I missed. So thanks a lot. I had another question about, there's a chart on the code, right, that has all the zoning classifications, and then the uses, right? Is that right, or somehow organized?
Threat.
Yeah. And so, one of the challenges, at least in my district, is this issue, there's the use for assisted living. And that's been used for also group homes, and other kinds of, some are recovery houses, some are some other kinds of transitional homes. And in general, I'm not opposed, but when there being a nuisance in the neighborhood, that becomes an issue. But I recently discovered, and maybe this is, I don't know who to address this to, that there are often uses granted, whether it's through the ADA compliance, or the, you know, for housing compliance, which I get, and I understand, and I understand that, but from non-licensed entities that are claiming they're going to use the property for this use, even though they're not licensed. So that's not something that we can change in the zoning, I understand. But is that something, I mean, I guess I'm just trying to apply the impact standard, which doesn't really exist, with the use standard. You know what I mean? And I'm trying to figure out...
You're speaking, I believe, to reasonable accommodations, and that's under housing. Assisted living is not actually a use in our zoning code. There's age-restricted housing, and there's residential care facilities. That's the definition, residential care. And every use in that table of the zoning code has a definition. That was one of the things we were very careful about in this new code.
Under residential care? Because I didn't see it under, like, when you look under R6, for instance, and it shows what can be allowed, and it says assisted living can be allowed. And then when you go to the, when you try to track the use, it says assisted living and not other types of... So I'm learning, so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, where we would find that information, and how we would...
So, so that we can move forward, I'm sure Planning is willing to sit with each, any, in each council member about specific property issues. So since this sounds like specifics...
I'm happy to take it offline. No problem, Madam Chair. Thanks a lot.
And Madam Chair Odet, can you please include me in on that meeting? It's an issue that we deal with in the fourth as well.
Absolutely.
Right. I do want to...
Yes, Councilmember, I got you.
I do want to remind the committee that this briefing is being recorded, and it's going to be shown again on Charm TV. And now I do see committee member, Councilman John Bullock, with his hands raised.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very quick. I just want to thank both Law and Planning for assisting today. Now, Victor, you mentioned how Baltimore is different than other jurisdictions in the state. And Lori, thank you for mentioning the bill on conversions, and also talking about transform. So I'm happy that we'll have a bit of a discussion around that piece of legislation, because, again, it speaks to something that's citywide. So I appreciate you taking the time to go through that at least a little bit today, and hopefully answer some more questions that our colleagues will have in the future.
And as you see, a lot of things have to come, particularly zoning, has to come through the Planning Commission first, before we can, you know, even think about scheduling certain things. Are there any other members of the committee that has questions? Because I know that we also have some attendees. Are there any, I don't see any more hands raised for the committee, attendees?
My hand is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilman Stokes, member of the committee. Go ahead with your question.
Real quick, I'm glad this is happening, because Councilman Odet kind of brought it up exactly to share what exactly what these zoning codes mean. Because a lot of times, it might be a owner want to change a zoning code, and the community don't know that zoning code also can fall under methadone clinics. And then it happens in my district, and the community gave them a letter of support. And then after I went back and told them exactly what that means, they kind of backed away. So I'm glad that Planning is now, you know, that, not just me, but the new council people know. I know most of it, but just sharing that with them, so that when that issue come up, and the community want a letter of support from the elected official, at least they know exactly what other, I'm just using C4. If you use C4, it covers a lot of stuff, it also covers methadone clinics. So they know exactly what other uses with C4 is. So I just wanted to share it. I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Exactly. And just to mention again, the Planning Department has always been open and willing to sit down anytime with a meeting with each council member specifically about any district-specific issues. But this particular one is, you know, generally for the committee. And I also see Councilman Costello's hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize if this was already covered, but Lori, did you touch on the upper deadline for the Planning Commission, so that council members are aware of, you know, kind of the timing that they're going to need on the back end in order to, any commission scheduled before they go to the chairwoman to request a hearing date?
Not specifically. I mentioned, we meet approximately every three weeks. There are posting requirements. But really, the best, if you have a bill that you're sponsoring, the best thing to do is to talk to us way prior to introduction. Because we can help, either Eric or myself can help talk through the bill before it's even drafted, you know, make sure it covers everything you need it to cover. And as Councilman Stokes mentioned, doesn't cover things you don't want it to cover. So we really prefer to meet with you in the drafting phase, and then once it's introduced, we're every three weeks, and, you know, for the hearing.
Any other questions from the committee? Your chance to answer, get a question answered, committee-specific?
Also, our posting requirements for your committee. Eric, do you want to, we should talk about the posting requirements for this committee as well. Because they take 30 days, I believe.
Right. So this is one of the things that we do when we have our pre-development meeting, and we're sitting with a particular applicant. We try and go through the calendar math, so that if somebody needs to have a legislative action, we kind of work backwards from mayor's signature, through the three readings of council, through the committee, back to Planning Commission, and, you know, back to point of introduction. Hopefully, that wasn't two weeks ago. So the Planning Commission, we have a 10-day posting requirement. Council's requirements are, I believe, 30 days, depending on the topic. So one of the things that we've always offered to do is, when there's something that needs to move quickly, Madam Chair, we'll let you know of our intent to get something scheduled, so that you'll know when something is going to come to Planning Commission, so that you can make an announcement for a hearing in advance, so that the timing works out. We're happy to try and assist as best we can with that.
Thanks. Councilman Glover?
Thank you. What I've noticed since I've been in this position here in the community, that there's, I'm getting a lot of, like, blind copy emails from constituents, and even the community association presidents, from individuals that, excuse me, from, like, planning, where you guys are kind of talking to those that are doing a development, or those that are asking, kind of basically for them to build certain things on certain properties. What I'm saying is that I'm not myself getting those emails. I'm getting a blind copy from community people that are getting the emails, but the councilman himself, I'm not receiving those emails. So what I'm asking, moving forward, anything that's going on in my district, and I think across, like, city districts period, that I want to have a pulse on everything. I want to see everything that's coming over here in the district. So I'm not getting them right now. I'm getting blind copied on them from other community members, and also from presidents. But I would like to have, I'm just asking, moving forward, I would like to have access, and I would like to know everything that's going on over here in District 13. And I appreciate that.
Certainly, yeah. We're happy to do that. And usually, that'll be through our comprehensive planners, that will have the closest relationship with you. One of the things that we always recommend to applicants is that, you know, certain things require public hearings, whether it's a legislative action that will go through you, or whether it's something that'll end up at the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, the BMZA. We always recommend that folks, number one, notify you, so that you don't get surprised when the neighbors come to you later, and then talk to adjacent neighbors and community organizations, both of those. Because sometimes, you know, whoever's, you know, living across the street, looking at the thing to be built, might not be active in their community group. And some applicants are, you know, better about that than others, but we always tell them boring hearings are good hearings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee questions? So I do know we have some attendees on as well. Could those attendees, could you use the hand raise function at this time, if you have a question? Going once, going twice? I see no hands raised in the attendees section. So at this point, I want to definitely thank the Planning Department and the Law Department for coming together on this very first hearing, just to give some information, some important information, as we start to schedule and move forward with our committee function. There are some things scheduled, so please continue to communicate with me and council services if you have any questions. I'm sure the council president's office is going to continue to be in contact with the administration side, and making sure that our reports and all get in in a timely manner. And if we don't have any more questions, again, I thank you, I thank everyone for, that took the time to attend and get more information. And this meeting is adjourned.